Good evening. The Florida Department of Transportation, Florida's Turnpike Enterprise, would like to welcome you to the public hearing for the Florida's Turnpike and I-95 Direct Connection Interchange in Martin County. I would like to formally open the public hearing. Today is Monday, October 20th, 2025, and the time is approximately 6:00 PM. My name is Jasen Georges. I am the Turnpike Project Manager. Here with me tonight are Bill Howell, the Consultant Project Manager, and other representatives of the enterprise and of the consultant team. We are moderating this virtual public hearing from Florida's Turnpike Enterprise Headquarters in Ocoee, Florida, and welcome those who are participating virtually or listening through the telephone. As a reminder, those of you who have joined virtually by computer, tablet, or mobile device will be able to see the presentation and provide verbal comments during the public comment period. At this time, we would like to recognize all federal, state, county, or city officials who registered to attend this virtual public hearing. We have Martin County Commissioner Stacy Heatherington. To provide a verbal comment, you will need to unmute your device when your name is called during the formal comment period. Shown is one option that you were given to join this virtual hearing, where you were given the option to download, where you could have chosen to download the GoTo app. Issues on muting your device generally do not happen when you download the app. Some people, however, have experienced issues on muting their devices when joining in a web browser. If you selected this option, there was a pop-up that requested use of your microphone. If you did not allow use of the microphone, and would like to provide a verbal comment during the formal comment period, the easiest solution may be to leave the virtual public hearing and rejoin. We will now begin the project presentation. It runs for approximately 24 minutes.
The Florida Department of Transportation, or FDOT, Florida's Turnpike Enterprise welcomes you to the public hearing for the Florida's Turnpike and Interstate 95 Direct Connection Interchange Project Development and Environment, or PDNE study. This public hearing is for financial project identification number 446975-1, and Efficient Transportation Decision Making, or ETDM, number 14444. The environmental study has been conducted by Florida's Turnpike Enterprise in compliance with all applicable federal environmental laws in pursuit to 23 United States Code Section 327, and the Implementing Memorandum of Understanding between FDOT and the Federal Highway Administration, signed on May 26, 2022. The FDOT Office of Environmental Management in Tallahassee is the approving authority. This public hearing was advertised consistent with federal and state requirements shown on the slide. Public participation at this hearing is encouraged and solicited without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. Persons wishing to express their concerns about Title VI may do so by contacting either the Florida Department of Transportation, Florida's Turnpike Enterprise Office, or the Tallahassee Office of the Florida Department of Transportation. This contact information is also provided in the project brochure and on a sign displayed at this hearing. Florida's Turnpike Enterprise has provided multiple options for interested persons to participate in this public hearing, virtually or online, by telephone in listen-only mode, or in person. The same information is being presented at each option. The proposed improvements involve constructing a direct connection interchange between Florida's Turnpike and I-95 near Bridge Road in Martin County. The purpose of this public hearing is to share information with the general public about the proposed improvements, the conceptual design, all alternatives under study, and the potential beneficial and adverse social, economic, and environmental impacts upon the community. The public hearing also serves as an official forum, providing an opportunity for members of the public to express their opinions regarding the project. There are two primary components to tonight's hearing. First, this presentation, which will explain the project's purpose and need, study alternatives, potential impacts, both beneficial and adverse, and proposed methods to mitigate adverse project impacts. And second, a formal comment period following this presentation, where you will have the opportunity to provide oral statements at the microphone, or you may provide your comments directly to the court reporter or in writing. Today's presentation will provide an overview of the study, the project's purpose and need, and our community involvement efforts. It will then explain the preferred and no-build alternatives and the potential environmental effects associated with the proposed improvements. Lastly, the study's schedule will be discussed along with how you can make a comment. A PDNE study is the second phase of FDOT's transportation project development process. Key components of a PDNE study include an evaluation of existing conditions, identification of future traffic needs, development and evaluation of project alternatives, environmental and engineering evaluations, and public and agency involvement. All findings and recommendations are documented at the end of the study. If a build alternative is selected, then the project moves forward into the design phase, subject to funding availability. Study limits are in Martin County along Florida's Turnpike and I-95, and extend approximately 2 miles south and north of Bridge Road. There is one existing interchange within the study limits on I-95 at Bridge Road. The purpose and need for a project provide the basis for developing, considering, evaluating, and eliminating project alternatives. The project's purpose and need are to improve system linkage, enhance safety, and enhance emergency response and evacuation. There are no existing direct connections between Florida's Turnpike and I-95. The local roadway network is used to move between the facilities. In Palm Beach County, this exchange is done at Indian Town Road. In Martin County, this exchange is done at Martin Highway. To improve system linkage, a connection is proposed approximately halfway between Martin Highway and Indian Town Road in the vicinity of Bridge Road. This slide illustrates how drivers currently go from I-95 northbound to Florida's Turnpike northbound at the Indian Town Road interchanges. It is one example of how the existing roadway network is used to switch between I-95 and Florida's Turnpike in Jupiter. This slide illustrates how drivers currently go from Florida's Turnpike southbound to I-95 southbound at the Martin Highway interchanges. It is one example of how the existing roadway network is used to switch between Florida's Turnpike and I-95 in Stewart. Congestion leads to crashes. Between 2018 and 2022, there were almost 1,300 crashes along the Turnpike between Indian Town Road to Martin Highway, resulting in 294 injuries and four fatalities. These crashes equate to a crash economic cost of $109 million. Between 2018 and 2022, there were over 2,600 crashes along I-95 between Indian Town Road to Martin Highway, resulting in 759 injuries and 18 fatalities. These crashes equate to a crash economic cost of $373 million. If nothing is done, increased congestion will lead to an increase in crashes. Both Florida's Turnpike and I-95 are part of the emergency evacuation route network and are critical in facilitating traffic movement during emergency evacuation periods. Community involvement is an important part of the PDNE study process. Feedback received from local governments, agencies, and the public has helped shape the project alternatives. Community outreach will continue through the completion of the study and into future project phases. There have been several opportunities for the public to provide input on this project. The PDNE study began in April of 2023. A kickoff newsletter was distributed in August of 2023. Virtual and in-person Alternatives Public Information Meetings were held in July of 2024. A project website was developed to share project information and allow interested people to communicate with the project team and provide comments. Project alternatives were developed following a tiered process. Initially, five sketch-level concepts were developed. Two of these concepts had fatal flaws due to not meeting system ramp design speeds and were dropped. Six variations of the remaining three concepts were added, for a total of nine concepts. These nine concepts were then screened down to four viable alternatives and then down to two build alternatives, Alternative 1 and Alternative 2. Shown are conceptual plans for Alternative 1 and Alternative 2. North is oriented to the right. Alternatives 1 and 2 provide the same four direct connections between Florida's Turnpike and I-95, northbound to northbound, and southbound to southbound connections between the two facilities. The main differences are that in Alternative 1, the four direct connection ramps are south of Bridge Road, while in Alternative 2, one pair of ramps are south of Bridge Road and the other pair north of Bridge Road. Modifications to the existing I-95 and Bridge Road interchange would be required in Alternative 1, while Alternative 2 would require no changes to the I-95 and Bridge Road interchange. An evaluation matrix comparing Alternatives 1, 2, and the no-build alternative was prepared and is available on the project website. Additional evaluation criteria include right-of-way impacts, potential impacts to environmental resources, and cost. The overall cost to design and construct Alternative 2 was estimated to be lower than Alternative 1. Alternative 2 was selected as the preferred alternative based on how well it met the project's purpose and need, results of environmental and engineering evaluations, and community input. Shown is a conceptual design of the preferred alternative. North is to the right. The preferred alternative adds four new direct ramp connections between Florida's Turnpike and I-95. A pair of ramps are located south of Bridge Road and the other pair north of Bridge Road. No modifications to the existing I-95 and Bridge Road interchange are needed. It is anticipated that the new direct connection ramps will be constructed with the widening of Florida's Turnpike 2 miles north and south of Bridge Road. This combined effort consolidates two projects into a single initiative to complete the work more efficiently, streamlining construction, minimizing disruptions for customers and residents, and resulting in more efficient use of resources. The widening of Florida's Turnpike was studied under project number 423374-1. Approximately 233 acres of additional right-of-way will be needed to construct the proposed improvements. Please refer to the display boards for more details on the potential right-of-way impacts. On the following slides, we will use renderings of the proposed improvements to show the proposed new ramps and how the improvements could look when constructed. The orientation of the graphic in the top right corner is from I-95 looking north towards Bridge Road. South of Bridge Road, there will be a direct connection ramp from I-95 northbound to Florida's Turnpike northbound. There will also be a direct connection ramp from Florida's Turnpike southbound to I-95 southbound. The orientation of the graphic in the top right corner is Bridge Road looking east. The bridges over Florida's Turnpike will be reconstructed to accommodate the widening of Florida's Turnpike. The orientation of the graphic in the top right corner is from I-95 looking south towards Bridge Road. North of Bridge Road, there will be a direct connection ramp from I-95 southbound to Florida's Turnpike southbound. There will also be a direct connection ramp from Florida's Turnpike northbound to I-95 northbound. The orientation of the graphic in the top right corner is Bridge Road looking west. No changes proposed to the existing I-95 and Bridge Road interchange. This video further illustrates what the improvements could look like when constructed. The highway to the left is Florida's Turnpike, and the highway to the right is I-95. The view is looking north towards Bridge Road. A pair of direct connection ramps would be located south of Bridge Road, southbound Turnpike to southbound I-95, and northbound I-95 to northbound Turnpike. Structures that carry Bridge Road over Florida's Turnpike will be reconstructed to accommodate Turnpike widening. The second pair of direct connection ramps would be located north of Bridge Road, southbound I-95 to southbound Turnpike, and northbound Turnpike to northbound I-95. Emergency access roads to be used by emergency vehicles only are also provided to Florida's Turnpike from Bridge Road. The total project cost for the preferred alternative is estimated at approximately $447 million in present-day costs. Pending completion of this PDNE study, design funding is anticipated in FDOT's fiscal year 2030. There is currently no funding for right-of-way or construction. The project will be consistent with the Martin County Long Range Transportation Plan, the Martin County Transportation Improvement Plan, and the FDOT State Transportation Improvement Plan. The proposed direct connection interchange near Bridge Road is projected to be used by 26,400 vehicles per day in 2050. With this new direct connection interchange available, fewer vehicles will need to utilize adjacent interchanges to transfer from one facility to the other. At Indian Town Road to the south, the Turnpike interchange will experience a 37% decrease in volumes. In the I-95 interchange, we'll experience a 16% decrease in volumes by 2050, which represents a decrease of 15,600 vehicles per day. At Martin Highway to the north, the Turnpike interchange will experience an 8% decrease in volumes by 2050, which represents a decrease of 3,200 vehicles per day. At High Meadow Avenue, the I-95 interchange will experience a 10% decrease in volume by 2050, which represents a decrease of 2,600 vehicles per day, also reducing traffic by 9% along High Meadow Avenue. The do-nothing, or no-build, alternative was also evaluated. The no-build alternative examines what happens if no improvements other than scheduled maintenance occurs. Advantages to the no-build alternative include no impacts to the social, cultural, physical, or natural environment, and no additional right-of-way or construction costs. Disadvantages to the no-build alternative include increased congestion at the existing Turnpike and I-95 interchanges and on the local roadway network, safety issues, and slower emergency response and evacuation times. We encourage you to visit the project website at your convenience to view detailed exhibits of the preferred alternative. As part of the PDNE study, the enterprise evaluated the potential social, natural, physical, and cultural effects of the proposed project. The listed features are just some of the type of analysis included in this study. Avoidance or minimization of impacts to these features is a key consideration. Impacts that cannot be avoided will be mitigated. Several areas of additional right-of-way are required and would drive minor land use changes as they are incorporated for transportation use. This project will not cause any relocation of families or businesses. All right-of-way acquisition will be conducted in accordance with Florida Statute 339.09 and 421.55, and also the Federal Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of 1970, commonly known as the Uniform Act. Pamphlets and a video, as shown on the slide, are available to further explain the right-of-way acquisition process. You may also speak to the right-of-way specialist who is supervising this program at the in-person public hearing, and they will be happy to answer your questions. If attending virtually, you may contact the project manager for the contact information for the right-of-way specialist. A contamination screening evaluation report was prepared to identify areas of contamination concerns. Four medium-risk sites and no-high-risk sites were identified. Further evaluation will occur during the design phase. No impacts to air quality are anticipated. Construction phase impacts, including noise and vibration, will be minimized through application of the FDOT's standard specifications for road and bridge construction. A preliminary evaluation of potential impacts to utilities identified eight utilities. Coordination with utility agency owners will continue in the design phase. Traffic noise analysis was conducted for this project. Results determined that no location within the study area was deemed feasible or reasonable for noise abatement, per FDOT criteria. The noise study report is available for review. After examination of the species records and available habitats in the project area, a determination of may-effect-not-likely-to-adversely-effect is made for the crested caracara, monarch butterfly, eastern indigo snake, wood stork, tri-colored bat, and everglade snail kite. This will require the implementation of the United States Fish and Wildlife Service standard protection measures for these species, and mitigation as appropriate for unavoidable impacts to their habitat. A determination of no effect is made for the American alligator, Florida scrub jay, red cockaded woodpecker, eastern black rail, Florida panther, and Florida grasshopper sparrow. A determination of may-effect is made for the Florida bonneted bat. Florida's Turnpike Enterprise will defer surveys for these species to the design phase and continue coordinating with the United States Fish and Wildlife Service regarding these species to identify mitigation measures if needed in future phases. No adverse effects are anticipated for the state-listed species listed below. The proposed project is anticipated to impact 77.42 acres of wetlands and 13.13 acres of other surface waters. These unavoidable impacts will be mitigated through the use of mitigation banks and other mitigation options. A Natural Resources Evaluation Report and Water Quality Impact Evaluation Checklist were prepared for the project and are available for review. A location hydraulics report was prepared for the project. No direct encroachment to the 100-year floodplain or to existing flood zones were identified. Existing off-site flooding will not increase from the construction of this project. There will be no net increases to floodplains as a result of this project. A cultural resources assessment survey was conducted for this PDNE study. No national register-eligible archaeological or historic sites were identified. No adverse effects are anticipated to any archaeological or historical resources as a result of this project. No Section 4F resources were identified within the project's study area. We welcome your comments that will help us make this important decision. You can submit written comments at the project website, or you can mail or email your comments directly to the project manager. During the in-person hearing, you can also submit your written comments using the comment forms provided. Written comments must be received no later than October 31, 2025, to become part of the public hearing record. All written comments and verbal statements received at this public hearing or submitted to Florida's Turnpike Enterprise by October 31 will be included in the public record for this hearing. The recording of this hearing will be linked to a follow-up email to all registered attendees if an email address is provided. The hearing video link will also be posted on the project website. The public comment period for this public hearing will remain open through October 31 to accommodate the public who view the hearing video after tonight. Outside the public comment period for the hearing, the department welcomes comments regarding the project at any time. The next step is to incorporate your input on this public hearing into our decision-making process. After the comment period closes and your input has been considered, a decision will be made, and the final PDNE document will be approved. The PDNE study is expected to be completed in the first quarter of 2026. This project has and will continue to comply with all applicable state and federal rules and regulations. Thank you for your interest in the Florida's Turnpike and Interstate 95 Direct Connection Interchange PDNE study. This concludes our presentation. The formal comment period will now begin.
It is now 6:26 PM, and we will begin the formal comment period. Virtual attendees that requested to speak when registering will be called upon first. Afterwards, anyone wishing to make a virtual comment will be able to raise their virtual hand using the GoTo webinar platform and request to speak. When you are called upon, we ask that you please state your full name and address. If you represent an organization, municipality, or other public body, please provide that information as well. We ask that you limit your input to three minutes. Speak clearly so that everyone can understand, and we can have a complete record of your comments. So, Bill, who do we have first?
Jaslen, our first speaker is Jasenya Lozano. And just a reminder, please state your name and address before providing your comments. So, Ms. Lozano?
Thank you, Bill. Bill, it seems like Ms. Lozano is not online this evening.
Okay, in that case, our next speaker is Mr. Zach Gaza. Mr. Gaza?
Mr. Gaza, I see that you have, at least on my end, it seems you have multiple devices. So, I'm going to go through and see if I can get you unmuted on either of them. Right now, you are self-muted. If you could unmute your device?
How's that?
That is perfect.
All right. I am going to be submitting my comments writing.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Mr. Gaza. Our next speaker is Tausha Hauck.
Thank you, Bill.
Ms. Hauck is not attending tonight?
Then the next speaker on our list is Farin Moats.
Hi, my name is Farin Moats.
Yes, Ms. Moats, would you like to provide a verbal statement? Hearing none, Ms. Moats. We will continue.
Our next speaker is Kent Malinowski.
Thank you, Bill.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
I'm wondering if there's been a cost-benefit analysis done for the project. Based on a lot of the benefits and the cost, I would like to see somebody calculate the cost amortized over the life of use, perhaps by the number of vehicles utilizing the feature over a period of time, so you could calculate the cost per vehicle. And I see the congestion savings and the reductions in accidents and injuries and death. You've calculated a dollar value for that, so if you can compute the two numbers, that'll give you a return on investment, which, based upon my look at this, it seems like a very substantial return on investment. And I would recommend, A, that you provide that to us as taxpayers. In doing so, it'll probably help to promote the viability of the project. And secondarily, given it's such a good idea, why in the world does it take 10 years to get it implemented?
Thank you for your comment. And as a reminder, please state your name and address when you begin to speak for the public record. Mr. Malanowski and everyone attending tonight, when you provide your verbal comments, we won't be responding tonight, but we will respond in writing at a later date.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker on the list is Leanne Grunow.
Ms. Leanne is not online tonight this evening, Bill?
All righty. Next person is Lauren Trammell.
Ms. Trammell also is not online this evening.
In that case, Dana Nole.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, my name is Dana Nole, and I'm a resident, homeowner at 3029 Southwest Captiva Court, Palm City, Florida. 34990. When we moved here many years ago, we have truly enjoyed the green space that Martin County has to provide for our family and, you know, the friends and everybody that I know. And we understand the need for this project, but we are totally against it because we would like to keep the land not as developed, you know, for the future of our kids and to have a balance of how the Martin County was supposed to be of green space, green land, and paved landscape. So perhaps this project can be considered somewhere else in a different location, as well as the farm, you know, the Hope Sound that would be affected, the farmland there. It has been an excellent source of getaway from the, you know, daily busy lives. And for children, they have so many events. It's a gem, truly, for kids and for adults, too. And we would truly not want to miss out on the opportunity to continue enjoying that place. But the other biggest thing is also the wildlife. It is just so heartbreaking to hear how many animals and species would be affected with the development that has been already going on in the neighboring counties and our county as well. It has shown how this wildlife is crawling on the roads, and they just slowly die out, and then it's forcing them to go in people's homes. And we would like to preserve the wildlife if we can. And that's, I think that's all my points that I can think from the top of my head, the environmental impact.
Well, thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it. The next speaker on the list is Geeta Vitari.
Geeta is not online, Bill.
That is the end of my list of registered speakers.
And now it's time for anyone else who wishes to speak to raise their virtual hand to provide input. When you are called upon, as a reminder, please state your name, your full name and address. And of course, if you represent an organization, municipality, or the public body, please provide that information as well. Limit your comments to three minutes. So if there's anyone who would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand. You can find that whether you're on your smartphone, phone, sorry, tablet, or computer on the GoToWebinar platform. So we'll wait to see if anyone raises their virtual hand. Bill, we have one. We have someone who would like to speak virtually, and the first person is Tracy Sullivan. You have to unmute your device. We will next try someone who is labeled "no more development."
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I would just like to say that I'm a longtime resident of Martin County. I've lived here since I was two years old. And this has been a place my family moved here for, to raise our family because of, like the previous speaker said, the green space and the amount of development that we've seen over the past, over the entire time I've lived here, really. But in the past like five years, it feels like that it just, there's going to be no end and that if we don't put a stop to it at some point, it's just going to continue further and further. And that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you, sir. All right, are there any other people that would like to speak? And if so, would you raise your virtual hand?
Yes, there are. Give me a few minutes to, well, not a few minutes, but a couple of seconds to catch up with you, Bill. The next person is Michael Druschel, and sorry if I'm saying your names incorrectly.
I know you did fine. Thank you. My name's Mike Druschel. I live in Orlando. My daughter works at that farm, and I've been down there a couple of times. And I've got to say, there are a few places that seem so special to me. The wildlife, the stands that they have, the courses they give for students and in the community. It's just outstanding. And I'm not saying it because my daughters work there. I'm just saying it's a beautiful area in Florida. And I've seen so much development since I moved here from Southern California. I was hoping a lot of the ruralness would stay. And I understand there's needs, you know, for the expressway to be improved, more safety, that type of thing. But I think the wrong approach is when you take valuable resources, land, away from people that are trying to be conservationists, that are trying to improve the area. If I lived there, that was my property, I would be really upset. I think for you people that are on the committee that oversee this project and the engineers, if that was your property, if you invested your time and your life into preserving conservation, giving back to the community, there's a value to that. And I don't know what the dollar value is, but I think it's pretty tremendous as somebody that values with passion and heart their community. So to state the command and try and take something away from people, to me, is the last thing we should be trying to do. As a Florida resident and taxpayer, I find that very offensive. The last thing we should be doing is taking away valuable property and land from people that are trying to be conservationists. And there's, good engineers can find good ways around it without taking a lot of people's land and property. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Druschel. Jaslyn, do we have any others?
Yeah, so far we have two more, Bill. We're going to go back and try Tracy Sullivan, and then next would be Captain Kelly Dobbs. So I'm going to now unmute Tracy Sullivan. You are self-muted. Okay, now you're unmuted.
There we go. Hi, this is Tracy Sullivan. I live at 9797 Southeast Cal Street in Hope Sound, 33455. And I'm going to piggyback onto the gentleman who spoke earlier about the business case. My questions are along the same lines to get a total figure in my head. At the top of this meeting, there were some quotations about accidents and the quantity of those accidents. But that was only in that section of the freeway. I have a couple of questions. How do you equate all the accidents in that area to the fact that there's not a transition there? Not all accidents are caused by the same problem. None of those might be caused by the lack of a transition. So I'd be interested to see the statistics on that. And then how does the amount of accidents in that section that they did equate, how does that translate into another section of the freeway? Is there, are there more accidents there? Are there less? It's a number that's thrown out, but we don't have all of the information. It needs both sides of that equation to see if that's a really distressed area or not. And I'd be interested to see that information. That's all my questions right now.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Jaslyn, the next speaker is Kathy Kelly Dot?
No, Bill.
Captain Kelly Dobbs.
Oh, Captain, sorry.
You are self-muted. You would have to unmute your device?
Okay, this is Captain Kelly Dobbs. I'm a professional yacht captain by trade. My address is 9404, 9404, 9408 Sunrise Drive, Lake Park, Florida. It amazes me that the government can find no better place other than through commerce to put a road. You have six and a half miles in between Jupiter and Hope Sound Bridge Road. And where there is no commerce, why couldn't you put an exchange there? Instead, you decide to go through a viable business that's trying to educate children, trying to bring children into and show them a rural life, and you decide to go right through there. That doesn't make sense to me. That completes my comments today.
Thank you very much, sir. Jaslyn, any others?
It doesn't seem that way, but I will check the list again. If you would like to make a comment, and you haven't already done so, please raise your virtual hand. It seems that there are no further comments for tonight. Again, is there's the opportunity to join our in-person public hearing tomorrow evening and provide a verbal statement at the podium? And all statements will be part of the public hearing record and will be responded to at a later date. After the nice public hearing, you can submit your written comments if you choose to do so using the project website. You can also mail it to me using US Mail or email your comments directly to me. We ask, even though you can provide comments at any time, we ask that you provide comments in relation to this public hearing by Friday, October 31, 2025, so that it can become part of the public hearing record. The verbatim transcript of this hearing's all proceedings, together with all written material, we see this part of the hearing record. And all studies, displays, and informational material provided at the hearing will be made part of the project's decision-making process and will be available on the project website and at the Florida's Turnpike Enterprise headquarters in Coe, Florida for public review upon request. Thank you for attending this public hearing and for providing your input into this project. It is now 6:45 PM, and we will close the public hearing. I will hereby officially close the public hearing for the Turnpike and I-95 Direct Connection Interchange PDNE Study. Thank you again, and have a good evening.